Lord, we're meeting today to conduct matters of business. Got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move next to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Blade Burks, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move next to citizens' comments. If we have any citizens' comments tonight? Yes, ma'am, please. Thank you very much. We have two. Looks like maybe somebody backed out. First, we'll have Mr. David Whitworth. Mr. Whitworth, if we could just state your address for us.
Yes, sir. My address is 723 Greeley Drive, Nashville, Tennessee, 37205.
Thank you, sir.
And I own property out along County Line Road here in Fairview.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Whitworth. Thank you for letting me speak today. Many years ago, Fairview annexed much of our nearby property with many promises of improved services, better utility, and improved infrastructure. Frankly, and somewhat disappointingly, many of those plans have not come to pass, at least not in our corner of the city. Just five minutes up Highway 96 on the way into town is an entirely different story. As such, I have some prudent questions to ask as a current taxpayer regarding new business number two, the annexation request on County Line Road. How will this affect the other neighbors on County Line Road in ways both positive and negative? What effect will this have on traffic on our small side road? It's already awfully difficult to get in and out in heavy traffic. If this piece of property is annexed, does the city plan to improve or widen the mouth of the road or add a stoplight or other diversionary measure? Also, what are the reasons our newest neighbors want to be added to the city? Are they planning a development? Will the city bury the unattractive above-ground power lines running off of Highway 96 and along the backside of this piece of property to match the rest of County Line Road? Will they provide streetlights or other safety benefits? Will they improve or adequately protect and maintain the water supply? After recently having a broken sewage line dump untreated sewage onto my property, courtesy of the city's contracted water authority, and into waterways that connect with the rest of Tennessee's river systems via the Turnbull Branch, it seems doubtful that they could handle more than there currently, more than is currently on their plate. Will the city elect to help extend or improve cable and internet access? Less than five minutes away, you can get broadband internet as fast as anywhere in the world. It's very impressive. In our corner of town, you can't get it at all. Fairview ought to commit to help bring that connectivity and convenience to all of its residents, including on County Line Road if they plan to annex it. Does the city currently have plans to annex the rest of County Line Road on this side of the highway? Is the city considering the other side of County Line Road across Highway 96 for annexation? Does it send the wrong message or disrespect the folks on the other side of the highway if they don't? Doesn't seem like a good idea to only add new owners necessarily. In short, how would this benefit the city to add this property to city limits? Would either the neighbors on County Line or current taxpayers of Fairview benefit from this? Would the city be willing to commit to any plans to make improvements suggested above or have any idea how much said improvements might cost city taxpayers? It couldn't hurt for the city to consider these things, and I sure do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We had a Mike Baker, but it scratched out. Just want to make sure that was canceled. And then we have a Karen Irving.
I come tonight seeking, I guess, the guidance of the council in a matter. Our business, first of all, my name is Karen Irving. My home address is 9959 Poplar Cumin Bonacqua. And my business address is 1518 Highway 96 North. I come here seeking some guidance from this council because mainly I've been unable to get the communication from, I guess, responsible county agents with regard to a very serious pothole condition in the driveway, entranceway of our store, which is also adjacent to a Shell station and an Exxon station. The pothole is tremendous. It's at least eight to 10 inches deep. And we've had customers blow out tires. And we've tried to keep a cone in it, et cetera, to try to abate that and try different things. We've had the benevolence of a citizen who's been filling the hole with dirt and dirt, but that has stopped. I've reached out. I had a discussion with Mr. Collins at one of these meetings about, well, more than six months ago, almost a year ago. He did some investigation and found that it was a state right-of-way, not a city, not the Fair, not Fairview. My question, and I've been unable to get any return communications to my phone calls or emails, how do I pursue this, or will the county pursue this with the state? How do we come to some conclusion on this? Do I need to pursue it personally, or will Fairview pursue this with the state to get this roadbed repair that's required?
Thank you very much. No additional citizens' comments? We will move to approval of the minutes. We have July 9th, 2019 minutes, and also the August 13th, 2019 minutes.
Who to approve?
Howard Anderson, any additional discussion? And just for clarification, approvals for both months, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Move to new business. Item one, rezoning request. Randall Enman subdivision, property located at 2655 Fairview Boulevard, map 69, parcel 31, RS 40, Commercial General Zoning District, property owned by Randall C. Enman. Notes from the staff are action required. A vote to give positive or negative recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for rezoning of the property mentioned above. Got anything additional?
As y'all remember, this came before you last month. It was brought in as a subdivision, and it was on me. I did not have that rezoning at the time, and that, like I said, that was on me. So it's come back to you for that rezoning recommendation to go before the Board of Commissioners for the rezoning of these three lots. Lot one, which is that top corner, will be residential. The other two will be commercial general. And if you remember from last month, it was one lot that had kind of a mixed zoning, and this just cleans, cleans that up.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to make a positive recommendation.
Burks, Blade, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys? We will move to item number two, annexation request. Property located at 7109 County Line Road, Fairview, Tennessee, map 19, parcel 1.01. Property owned by Ray Flake. Action required, a vote to approve the plan of services for the annexation of the property mentioned above. A vote to give positive or negative recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for annexation of the property mentioned above.
Just as a note on this, it has gone before the Board of Commissioners, and the public hearing has been approved to be set for that.
Mr. Sullivan, how many acres is this? I'm trying to find it again.
There were five or something. Is that right?
5.05, 5.056 acres. The legal description.
So if you go down Highway 96, you take a right on the County Line Road. I want to say it's maybe the third or fourth parcel? Absolutely. Thank you.
Do we know anything about the intention for the annexation or the reason for the request?
So I think Mr. Flake is here, but he was at the Board of Commissioners meeting this past Thursday that I attended, and he did show intention of trying to pursue some kind of multifamily for his, for his family. Of course, we will get to that. If he intends on rezoning, it will come with the plan of action. And a lot of those questions that Mr. Whitworth asked earlier will kind of coincide with that as well because he would have to come and get a rezoning acceptance for whatever use he's after. It would come in right now as an R40, which would be a one home per acre.
And as I recall, I mean, Mr. Flake was nice enough to kind of explain what his ideas were, but there's no requirement that he tell us or provide any kind of plan with an annexation because it cannot be a conditional annexation. We can't say, well, we'll annex it if you're going to do this or this. We can't do that. So even though he has no obligation tells, he kind of laid out for the Board of Commissioners what his thought process was. One thing he commented on, there was really no, there's not a lot of multifamily housing in this area. And he has children that would like to live here, and so that was kind of what he was thinking. So we would just have to see.
Yep. The only way for annexation would be for the property owner to request annexation. Right. So if his neighbors wanted to request annexation, they certainly would have the right to go through the same process.
Tennessee changed the law, I can't remember how many years ago now, Tim, that did away with forced annexations. So we can't make someone annex into the city anymore. That was a former practice that did occur, but that's no longer available. So if you want to be a part of Fairview, you have to come to us and ask us to annex you versus the old way of us, of them fighting us if they didn't want to be annexed in. And that used to occur here as well.
Is that what they call it there? Since we don't have a, is the property next to it, I mean, is it continuously going to be Fairview from 96? This would be the end property now, or is it?
Yes, the adjoining property is in the city limits of Fairview.
Okay, so.
That is correct.
I make a motion. We accept the annexation.
So a motion for positive recommendation to the board. Is there a second? Ally Anderson. Any additional discussion or questions?
I think it's worth just referencing the Fairview 2040 plan that we've got.
Ally.
Where would this fit into the Fairview 2040 plan? I'm trying to look at it here on the map, and it's just on the other side of 40 over there near the Amish mattress showroom and Laura's loft. What are we currently planning in the next 20 years for that to be? And then how would this affect that?
I don't think it necessarily would have been in our comprehensive plan since it was not part of the city. The main corridor of that intersection, I think, came out mainly as a commercial-driven area since it's around the interstate. That was kind of the vision on that comp plan that came through. And I would say that the growth boundary projected kind of this area too is capturing annexation.
The commercial stuff, though.
Well, it would have to come in first as R40. Just everything that comes in would be R40.
He would have to request a rezoning if he wants to, to the Board of Commissioners to say, hey, I want to rezone this to commercial, or I want to rezone this to multifamily or anything.
So we have first, second, additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, guys. Now move to item three, concept plan, Red Bud Springs subdivision. Property located at 500 Highway 96 North, map 22, parcels 134.07 and 134.08. Property owned by Habitat for Humanity of Williamson in Moore County. Mr. Jenkins, if I could get you to read those staff and engineer comments for me.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right. I'm going to break this thing down. The no voting action to be required tonight. The planning commission shall review the conceptual plan in accordance with criteria contained in these regulations and with other applicable laws of the city. The planning commission shall formally advise him or her, the applicant, of the extent to which proposed subdivision of land development conforms to the relevant standards of these regulations and may suggest possible plan modifications that would increase its degree of conformance. Engineers' comments. Number one, the project will require a TDOT highway entrance permit. Number two, the project will likely require a SWP P P and TDEC permit. Number three, check for any overlays or requirement for a POD. Four, per 5-102.203 of the subdivision regulations, provide location and label on plans, all features included in section C, D, E, F, H, I, and J. Number five, a cluster mailbox system will be required. Number six, provide the turn lane warrants for left turn-in and right turn-in. Will likely, those will likely be required by TDOT. Number seven, parcel appears to be located in the 100-year floodplain. Number eight, check turnaround area at pavilion and playground as well as road end turnaround for maneuverability of emergency vehicles. Number nine, would HOA maintain the common areas? Number 10, need to label all setbacks at lot lines. And number 11, finally, label all utility lines for clarity.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Yep, if you have any comments.
The last one or two Habitat for Humanity projects that I've seen here in Fairview, I don't feel like are up to high quality for what they're doing or to 100% beneficial to the people that they're supposed to be trying to help. And what we have heard, the last.
Will you make sure your mic's on for me? Is it not? Thank you, sir.
From what we've heard, the last subdivision that they have requested and came under the guidelines of Habitat for Humanity, and then they have done a full-blown retail sale of one of their homes as a normal builder would do. So if that is true, then the coming in under the guidelines of Habitat for Humanity and then building kind of is a misleader to the city. So with those things in mind, I know we can't do much about that, but it does let us look, lets me look hard at what they're doing and what they're saying. That's it.
Good afternoon. Can I speak to that?
Yes, sir. Could you please state your name for me?
Joe Chapdellane.
Thank you, sir.
Tabitha, I'm sorry, Tasha Towery is the representative of Habitat for Humanity. We did not learn about the, this one being presented to very late this evening, so she wanted to be here. Habitat has developed several pieces of property in a format that you're familiar with as far as in the process that they've accomplished this through volunteer help and funding. There has been several attempts, including the current attempt, to change their mode of operations in a way that more similar to what a standard developer may approach a project. Briefly, let me speak from what I understand, and again, I may not be fully up to exactly where they're coming from, but my understanding in dealing with them, they are trying to have an opportunity to have the lower income and the assistance as, as generally spoke of, as well have an opportunity to create some areas of homes that are capable to be sold into the retail market as a mixture of things. Where, and they're trying to do that for the variety of, as I understand it, lifting the, the complex or the development up into a higher standards than they would if it was just all of one, one type of community or construction. Where they're at right now on this particular project, two things I'd like to speak of. First of all, this is a very difficult piece of property to develop because of the cost factor, because of the terrain and those type of things. So we've looked at, initially, you folks looked at a concept of single-family dwellings. There was a lot of comments concerning that. There was comments about issues that you folks had. There was comments about the engineering component of it, which was where the expense and the cost caused us to take a look at not, including sidewalks on both sides when it clearly calls for it in the subdivision regs. Through all of the meetings and all the comments that came from this body, among others, and some of the things that Habitat has been doing of recent, and they have been providing directions from their board to consider moving into a development stage as a standard developer would be with the addition to homeowners associations and with all the, that entails with that. Be able to have a combination of dwellings and homes, whether it's a resident, a single-family or a multi-unit family. They're just trying to provide whatever standard is necessary to change their stripes, as it were. Because honestly, there has been a lot of comments from different boards that seem to have, have put a bad taste in their mouth about what Habitat's doing. What I think they're attempting to do here is just move up to the next level. And they're looking for that assistance to do that. We're looking at this development to be townhouses because we have heard that townhouses is needed here. Whether, what's being presented in concept design is two-unit townhouses. It was a basically a misunderstanding, as I understand through staff, that they, they thought we were looking at duplexes. This is not duplexes. This is two-unit. It may be a three-unit or a four-unit townhouse consideration.
And it would need, and it would need a rezoning?
Yes. Mm-hmm. It would, it would require whatever is necessary for that process.
So I think, just for clarification sake, I think that you, the cart before the horse, if you need to rezone before you submit a, your next step in your plan, just.
Sure.
Some forethinking.
Absolutely. Because we've taken such a long stride to get to this point, because they've, they've invested probably $50,000 in engineering and cost involved just to get, make these changes up to this point. We, I took a initiative to approach to, and they were agreeable to this and that a two-unit townhouse was, would abide by the general rules that's in there now. And they wouldn't have to necessarily go through that rezoning. However, that is still open to them, being the concept stage of this. They're, because this is really brand-new to them. And so they're trying to get their feet wet on what's the best way, where to find the best concept plans for this development. We decided sometime back, when this was pulled from our last meetings a few, few months ago, that they wanted to look at this and, and still find a way to develop this piece of property. They have conditions that they have to have to develop a piece of property in the format or in the guidelines that they offer as far as construction with volunteer help, funding, and that sort of thing. They like to see around an 18-unit, 20-unit, to be able to go into and, and work that area for a year. That's kind of a game plan of theirs that, that is, works out satisfactory for the funding and the, and the volunteer help that they have. And, but again, they're trying to step up from what their, their past experiences have been before. One thing I did ask her to produce for me, Ms. Towery, but again, weren't aware that this was coming up tonight, so she couldn't give them to me. I'd asked her to give me some concept plans on, on what the elevations or the view of what the intent would be for townhouses in this type of development. And I have not seen those. So I have wanted to submit those with you tonight. So that's kind of the nutshell of how I understand their position, and they're very willing to move beyond the concept of what you understand, sir, is what they have done in the past. They're wanting to move to that next level and, and not be held back because of past experiences or past understanding of who they were before. They presented this for a purpose of just taking that next leap and trying to put that together and trying to make that happen.
Thanks, sir.
I have a question about the, the shared driveways. How will those be maintained? And will, do you have any idea what the ratio of, you know, the, those that are buying it as a habitat home versus a regular home? And are you pairing a habitat resident with a reg, you know, a typical for-sale home?
Yes. Unfortunately, that's probably above my pay grade as far as what, what the understanding of that. I'm sure their board, which she meets with regularly to have, developing this plan and to try to step into that environment, they've considered those issues that I think are very fair questions. I do not know what that answer is. I, I don't necessarily think that they would consider pairing, as you mentioned, a lower income versus other. Again, a lot of this is driven by what is capable of being done by a volunteer help. It's not like, I'm, I'm a contractor as well, so I can tell you if I were to go in to step into developing or building a, a structure or multiple structures, I understand how I'm going to do that. I'm going to do that as a, as an assembly of multiple tasks involved. I think one of the reasons for staying with two units, they can control the, the construction of those two units at a time as opposed to a single unit. I think that's part of their thinking process in that.
Sure. I guess what I'm really getting at is who will be maintaining those shared driveways? So if you've got fixed income, living there, are they going to be able to?
This is all HOA-driven. So everyone will be paying dues regardless of your income level. It's, it's to, it's not, it would, it would be no different than any other development that requires the HOA. And so those fees are, are processed through the homeowners. And so those fees are, are processed through the homeowners, whoever they are.
Sure, okay.
Are you, are you saying the homeowners association would own the driveways?
Well, if it's a common area, if it is a, and again, I think we're stepping beyond where I'm, I need to be right now with this discussion, because I don't know the details on that.
These are the kind of questions that we would ask.
I think, I think we'll get more clarification on that too, when the construction plans come through, but not, not making any recommendation to the, to you guys as the applicant, but maybe ask the staff, if they are a townhome, is it going to be a private drive? If it's a public drive, is it, does it need to be curb and gutter? Does it need to be paved, as part of a public street? And then, there's two other questions I had for staff, just to check on too, before it comes back, was, like, the parking area up there at the clubhouse and stuff is literally adjacent to, on the property line? Is there a required buffer? Is there a required setback? Is there required separation? The road runs down the property line? Is there any required separation? Is there any kind of buffer? Just things to consider when you go through the construction drawings, just to double-check. And you may have already checked those things, or Kevin.
Couple of questions along those lines. What is the off, or the setback for a driveway? How far can it be to the property line? Is there any requirement?
There's no requirement for the driveway.
Okay, I couldn't remember if it was.
Commercial driveways, we do have separation for obvious reasons, but residential, we do not have separations from sidelines.
Additionally, for multifamily housing, is there a require, what, at what point do we require they be sprinkled?
Any building that's over five thousand square feet, does have to be sprinkled. Whenever we are having multifamily, even the two-family, they do have a fire separation.
Okay, so it's a firewall, basically, between the two, but not a requirement for it to be sprinkled until it reaches that five thousand square feet?
Once it reaches over two families, so if it's a three-family, it would, or once it hits over the five thousand square feet.
Okay. So Mr. Chapdeline, that might be a consideration that they would want to look at, if they're saying, hey, we may want to do three or four-unit buildings, that cost, for that, to have that sprinkled, and...
As I mentioned, I am a, a commercial general contractor, so I am aware of the fire requirements, and particularly in construction.
I understand, but just make sure they understand that when they're thinking about that, and those types of things.
Absolutely.
And is that something that volunteer work can do? I would say no, but...
But fire weight, fire-rated walls, separation is generally a subcontractor work, as far as that goes, for the most part. And that's another thing, too, they're using more and more subcontractors, particularly in this type of scenario, to be able to accomplish what they're trying to accomplish. So that's happening more and more anyway, so that would be part of what I think they would be considering.
And I know in the past, there was, this has been before's before.
Yes, sir.
There were some issues about, you know, where those retaining ponds were, was that on someone's property, part of someone's lot, or is that going to be common area, as well as a retaining wall?
So, no, in this concept, because of the fact that we did relocate the driveway, the retaining walls were not going to be necessary, as far as the common area. That initially was a very early-on concept, later on, the detention area is in a common space, and as, as mentioned, HOA responsibilities for maintaining.
You know, if these townhomes are going to have any storage space for out, you know, like a storage building?
Again, this is very early, and their understanding of this concept, they are trying to work out the details of what's, when is necessary to make a viable townhouse community. And so they've got a board of primarily volunteer professionals, and I have sat in with them, that they gathered together to discuss these issues and options, and, and again, that's above my pay grade, as far as the understanding behind it.
And you talked a little bit about future, that you, you might have some concept drawings or something, when the construction plans come. You mentioned that earlier, that you might have some elevations of what they'll look like and things like that, so you might have some additional information when the construction plans come.
I truly had hoped to have some in this meeting, because I knew this was a, a hundred and eighty degree from where we were headed before, and I really wanted that understanding of where, where they are now coming, because it is new for what they have presented to you before, or what you're familiar with, with them. And so I'm sorry that didn't happen for a night, but absolutely, we, we have relied you with that.
Thank you, sir.
Micah, or whoever on, on the board might recall, with the new subdivision regulations, do we have a requirement for improved open space per the acreage, like, at a rate of the acreage of the property, or is that only for PUDs? Does anybody recall? Just PUDs?
I believe it's just PUDs, I'd have to go back and look, but...
Thanks.
And there's still a question on whether or not this would have to be or not.
Okay, whether or not it has to be a PUD.
That's one of the notes of taking a really easy requirements for a POD.
Great, and then if it is a POD, the requirements for improved open space per acre is, what was it, five percent or ten percent?
I think five percent improved, ten percent required.
Okay, so that's something to consider as well. What's the acreage on this?
Eight point something.
Yeah, common space, and I don't have my drawing in front of me, but it is over that percentage.
Well, the, the key phrases, or the key term is improved open space, and I see there, it looks like there's a pavilion and a playground, which is great. The question is, as far as I'm concerned, that is the only area of improved open space? The rest can all be, the other five percent or whatever would make up the common area that you see there, and like I said, there's a lot of common area, but improved open space is a key, and that's going to be stuff like playgrounds, pavilions, things like that. So if that is five percent, whatever that percentage is, I'd have to look it up, I don't think we can confirm right here on the spot. We'd have to make sure that we have at least that amount of improved open space of those types of features for the subdivision. That's all, just to be aware. Question number two is, I was just curious, Mr. Chapdeline, have you already received a copy of the engineer's comments for, for your reference?
I have, but most of those comments were addressed early on.
Okay.
We have contacted, not in this, not in this consideration, but we dealt with all those earlier, particularly with the T dot, among other things. They are just, again, at the concept stage, we did not re-present those, those will actually come in on the next level, and obviously, we will address those items as well.
I was just, I was just curious now if you had any, like, need for clarification around any of those things while we were here.
I see, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, cool, yeah, absolutely.
Additional discussion or questions?
One thing I would say, I did note that the recommendations, it does talk about the fact you have to have the cluster mailbox, and just don't forget to keep in mind the requirements the city has for X number of spaces you have to have just for that, and lighting, whatever those requirements are, so. I know that's new to us, so just want you to keep that in mind also.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Chapdeline, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Alright, we will move on to reports for discussion information. City planning staff, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you all for being here earlier. For anybody who's watching, the, the meeting we had before was about the IDT system. We're going to go live with that on October first, as a soft, and then November first, as that will be our submissions for developments, as well as commercial and residential building permits. So I do want to get that out to everybody, that that is something we're going to, you can check our website pretty soon for more information about that. Other than that, thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Blightburn.
Aye, sir.
Thank you, sir. City attorney, Mr. Potter. Thank you, sir. Communication from the planning commission members, we'll start with Commissioner Burks.
Just a few things. We had a couple speakers tonight on citizens' comments. That pothole is a little ridiculous, and it's, as someone said, I think they looked in it and saw a Dollar General. So it's pretty large. Or subway. Could be a combo. Part of the problem is, it's not on our property, it's not in our right-of-way, it's not something we can get to, or have, or allowed to fix. I know it took a lot to even find out that information. I spoke to Mr. Collins about this some time ago, and trying to find out whose land it was on, did it belong to one of the business owners, was it, we didn't know. But it apparently does belong inside the right-of-way of the state, and as frustrating as they are, that's who you have to deal with, unfortunately. Can't guarantee they would return our calls any better than they would the citizens, unfortunately. As to annexations, hopefully, we were able to answer a few questions. We don't annex people, they come to us and ask to be annexed. We don't forcefully annex anybody anymore, which is a very good thing, in my personal opinion. We don't know at this time what that property will be used for, we have some ideas of what it may be used for, but a lot of those questions will be answered in a rezoning request before the Board of Commissioners. That's when those things start coming out, and we start looking at that, as to whether or not we will rezone it or not, so. Just stay in touch on those issues, and look forward to that, coming before that board at some point. And thank you for coming out, that's all I have.
Only update I have, those who are interested in the status of the Waffle House, they are closing on their loan this week, from what I understand, and they should begin construction very soon. So maybe Q1 of next year, so we should have ourselves a working Waffle House. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Nothing further tonight.
Sir, Mr. Power. Thank you, sir, and Mr. Callie.
Nothing tonight.
Sir, Ms. Qualls.
I just want to congratulate you, Micah, on your promotion, it's good, and thank you, Mike, for spending your time at the water department and bringing that good news about the water department, it's good, appreciate it.
Mayor Bleed.
Nothing tonight, sir, thank you.
Sir, Jenkins.
Thank you for coming out, sir, and addressing us and letting your, your thoughts and concerns be known, appreciate it.
I echo all the great things said, and I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. So moved.